Mission meeting for of October ninth, twenty eighteen to order. Will you all please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission meeting for of October ninth, twenty eighteen to order.
Roll call.
All please join me.
Chair Srohman.
President.
Vice Chair Sarkozy.
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Here.
Commissioner Danziger.
Here.
And then Commissioner Willis is absent excused.
All right, please note, all cell phones, pagers, similar devices need to be set to silent or vibrate mode or turned off unless you're an on duty emergency responder. Roll call. All please join me.
I think you have it on. Oh, it's still on. The video is going.
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Gotta love technology. Uh, we have no presentations. Items on the consent calendar, do any commissioners have any items to note from the minutes on from September eleventh?
I don't.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of September eleventh?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Commissioner Castellanos, okay. Administrative matters, we have none. All right. So first item on our agenda, um, do we open the public hearing or we get the staff report first, correct?
Staff report.
Staff report first.
Okay, so application eighteen dash six eight nine tentative parcel map site plan review and conditional use permit. Staff, take it away.
Good evening commissioners, good evening audience. Before us tonight, we have an application for a tentative parcel map, a site plan review and a conditional use permit. The applicant is wanting to divide a five point oh six acre site in the C two zone into three parcels. Two of the parcels fronting McHenry Avenue are planned for future commercial use. And the third parcel is planned to be a ninety nine space RV boat trailer storage facility. And then each parcel will dedicate a portion of itself to become a storm drain detention basin. And the zoning of this lot is C two, community commercial. And the surrounding areas to the north is various commercial Hillier Ford, the First Baptist Church is there over off of Catherine. To the east, uh, the parcel is out of city limits, so the eastern border of this project is the city limits. But it that parcel is going to be in our sphere of influence, it's pre-zoned R three, which is high density residential. To the south of the project is various commercial in the C two zone, uh, Ace Hardware, the bank, and there's also R one residential. And then to the west across McHenry Avenue is M two heavy industrial. If you choose to approve the project tonight, there are some findings that are required for the three applications, the tentative parcel map, the site and architecture application and for conditional use permit. And then the project would qualify for a sequo exemption under minor land divisions and infill projects.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have more, sorry.
No problem.
I'm just getting started, Sean. Staff does recommend approval of this project. And so some background and history on the parcel, Caltrans, state, State of California Department of Transportation purchased this parcel in nineteen nineties and it was designated for a future bypass, so they were going to build a bypass around Escalon to divert the highway one twenty traffic around town instead of going straight through it. This project never came to fruition as the city expanded that way, residential moved that way, commercial moved that way. They abandoned the project, uh, in that location and Caltrans sold the parcel as surplus property. And the applicant, uh, closed Escalon in January of this year. As we noted, the applicant is looking to divide the prop parcel into three parcels, two future mixed commercial lots, parcel A and B. And you can see them on your tentative parcel map on the screen and the TVs. Parcels A and B designated to future commercial lots and parcel C and RV boat trailer storage facility. So parcels A and B would be approximately point eight eight five acres each, fronting McHenry. These lots could be built out by the applicant or as they are subdivided and vacant, he could sell them to a different developer who could build those out. There's kind of some draft drawings of what those parcels could look like. They're not part of the development of A and B aren't part of this application. So whoever does choose to develop them would have to come with their own application for site and architecture, possible conditional use. So that's just an example, that's not what we're approving tonight. Parcel A and parcel C would have driveways off of McHenry, but parcel B in the middle would not have a driveway. With the speeds that are on McHenry, you like to have spacing of driveways approximately every two hundred feet. So with them all in a row, A and C will get a driveway, but B will not. There will be reciprocal access and parking agreements among all three parcels, so that if you pull into parcel A, you could park in parcel B or A or C, they all kind of share the parking and access. Right now in McHenry, in front of this, uh, project, there is a center median that has trees. And if the project is developed as proposed in the tentative parcel map with the center median there, people driving south on McHenry would not be able to get in a turn lane and turn into these parcels. So in order to facilitate, um, safety and circulation, the applicant has proposed removing the center median and just continuing the turn lane that's north and south of the median. And staff supports this, we've worked with the applicant, um, we love our trees in Escalon. And as part of removing those trees in the senior median, they would increase their planting on the frontage of the developed parcels to make sure that those trees are accounted for. But not in the sidewalk. And when projects are being developed, um, as part of the city's MS four permit from the state water board, when possible, projects should, um, install low impact development standards for their storm water, which means they, the state does not like projects to just directly connect to the city storm system and send all their water out to discharge to the city, they want to have onsite retention. So the applicant has proposed that a piece of each of the three parcels form a storm drain detention basin and those are behind parcels A and B would be the storm drain detention basin. There'd be an easement over the basin so that, uh, you, because storm water from say parcel B and C would go over onto parcels A land because it's a storm basin. So there would be an an easement over the top so that everything is legal and nobody's going to, um, have any issues that someone else's water is coming on their property. It also will help the city, um, enforce any maintenance requirements because all three will have ownership of the basin. So we could, we could reach out to any of the three owners to take care of any maintenance issues. And parcel C, um, is where the, uh, site plan and the conditional use permit apply. The applicant's proposing a gated paved storage facility that would accommodate ninety nine RVs, trailers, boats. The access would be off of McHenry Avenue. And the parcel continues east the length of the lot behind the estate's residential neighborhood. Some highlights of the project, there's a trash enclosure, guard shack, uh, three customer parking stalls, an RV dump station with water and air, a masonry wall surrounds most of the perimeter landscaping and is going to be connected to city water sewer and storm. And the options available for the storage, the stalls are twelve feet wide and you can get them in thirty five or forty foot lengths. The project will include a guard shack, this is going to be just inside of the gate. And it show, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but it shows up right here, kind of behind the blue wrought iron gate, uh, securing the property, so the guard shack is right there. The colors that were proposed were gray and blue, um, staff recommends alternative colors, gray, blue is kind of the stock modular building as this is going to be a permanent structure as part of the development, we'd like to see something more earth tone, brown, tan. So we'll work with the applicant on that. Aside from the guard shack, there are not any structures, shade covers, buildings, this is not indoor storage, it's outdoor storage. There will be a masonry wall, eight feet height around the majority of the project and that can be seen in red is the masonry wall, around the storm basin, they're proposing a six or eight foot chain link fence and then the front entrance to the project is going to be a wrought iron gate. The RV storage facility will be lit and it's going to be monitored by a remote security system with night vision. And have a minimum of thirty days recording retention. And access to the site, customers will get in through the automatic gate and they'll either have individual remotes or a- access codes. The project will have three customer parking spaces, which is what is the minimum required by code. And as far as landscaping, commercial projects need to have a minimum of ten percent, this project has seventeen percent. So they're above their minimum requirements for landscaping. On the lot directly south, uh, of parcel C in front of the city's storm basin, the city's going to be constructing a new McHenry lift station, we currently have one on the west side of McHenry. We're going to be constructing a new one on the east side of McHenry. And then we go, we would go back to driveway spacing, if you have driveways too close together, it creates unsafe, uh, entrance and exits. So we talked to the applicant, instead of him doing a driveway on the south side of parcel C and us doing one directly adjacent to it on the city parcel, that, um, he would give us access through his entrance to come over on our parcel to the south and the applicant has agreed to that, to give us, uh, an access easement to go through their property to get onto city property. The applicant has proposed operating hours for the RV business and it would follow the city's noise ordinance fairly closely. Customers would have access to pick up or drop off their vehicles seven days a week between seven AM and nine PM. And if the applicant wants to amend those hours sometime in the future, um, they would come back before the planning commission for a conditional use permit amendment. When we met with the applicant in the very beginning, when they were looking at part purchasing this parcel, you know, applicants come in and they say, what's it zoned, what can we do on it? And staff and the applicant really sat down and thought about of all the uses that are possible for this lot, what is least going to affect the residential neighborhood to the south? Because the C two zone, you can have different, different types of businesses like a pork, a park, sports field, cell tower, hospital, school, hotel, restaurant, equipment or machinery repair, motor vehicle service, a recycling center, medical business offices, retail sales. And so we really thought that the RV, the RV storage with the hours of operation would least impact the residential neighborhood as far as noise, um, and just the busyness of it. Eight homes from the estate subdivision do border the property and I don't know if you can see my mouse, but they're right here on the south side. Right adjacent behind the masonry wall that exists, this white area, it's a twenty foot landscape buffer. The minimum required is a five foot landscape strip, but the applicant was really sensitive to the neighbors and proposed a twenty foot. And in your packet, there's a preliminary landscape plan, they're per- proposing Deodore Cedars, which can get fairly large, create a nice dense barrier. So combined with limiting the hours operation, the twenty foot landscape buff- buffer with the appropriate tree planting and the applicant will put, uh, shields on the parking lot lighting, uh, to direct light away direct light away from the subdivision. We think this business can thrive with the residential neighbor next to it with little impact. A public hearing notice went out in the Escalon Times and we sent a, the same public hearing notice to every property owner and occupant within three hundred feet of the site. It covered about three quarters of the residential neighborhood and so we just sent it to the whole neighborhood. So a few extra got it. At least ten days before the meeting, we had one inquiry, someone called in, uh, and inquired about the project. Did not express any concerns, but just was wondering what is going to be happening there. So planning commission decision tonight, it begins a ten day appeal period and that would expire October twenty third. We reviewed all the comments received from the outside agencies as well as staff and have put together the conditions of approval included with the staff report. So staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, uh, hear from the applicant, take any public testimony, close the public hearing, make the findings required for the three applications, tentative parcel map, site and architecture and conditional use, find the project sequo exempt and staff recommends approval of the project subject to the conditions proposed below or is amended by planning commission, thank you.
All right, any comments from any commissioners before we open the public hearing?
She was pretty thorough, I had some questions. I was curious about the color.
The color of the?
The guard shack.
Yeah.
And you're going to have a blue gate, is that what that wrought iron gate is going to be?
Wrought iron, probably black, we can check with the applicant, I would assume black.
I was thinking blue because of the color on the map here. It's a really small building, is that a, is that a problem for the applicant? To change colors or is there a reason for blue and brown? Well, I'm just talking to staff.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have them address it.
You must have had discussions.
Yeah, it's just a prefabricated building, um, so it probably comes standard, blue and gray.
Oh, I see.
So we'll just ask them to paint it.
On parcels A and B, uh, if it's, say the property is sold at a later date and the new property owner wants to combine them, uh, do they have to come back to the planning commission?
A parcel merger?
Uh, mergers can be done in-house through the city engineer.
Through the engineer.
Yes, they will not come to a, a board if there's any lot line adjustments or lot mergers.
But as they develop it, they would have to come in for the building.
All my other questions are for.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the, how thorough it is, the, the background, um, so I do have a few questions, but that can come up during the hearing.
Okay, so with that, we will open the public hearing at seven nineteen PM. Just a reminder to the audience, if you step forward, please state your name and your address so that we can adequately record it in the minute.
My name is Kevin Wentworth, I live at eleven sixty-three Cameron Lane in Ripon, California. And I'm the, uh, proposer of the project, I just want to step forward and answer any questions you might have. Spent a lot of time, um, trying to take a parcel of ground that's very difficult to find a good use for. And as the staff has said, we really want to work with the neighborhood and also work with the city. Was born in Escalon and lived here for several years before moving on. And have a, a deep love for the city and want to see something good come in here. And also create a couple of parcels where two more in, you know, with parcel A and B, that's, that's a parcel size that businesses are looking for to come in and, and add to what's already going on here in town. And any, any questions you might have, I'd be more than happy to answer and also MCR that's worked on the project for me is here for anything technical that would be above my pay grade.
Any questions?
You, you're always starting with me, I feel picked on. I, I'll start. I really appreciate the fact that you're doing this project, this, this town's really needed an RV storage area that meets code, uh, for quite some time, so I applaud your product. I have an RV and I store mine and the, the owner of that RV storage lot has recently started a policy of removing older RVs over a certain age, ten years, twelve years. Are you going to have such policy?
At this point, no, I haven't, as far as the use size, you know, um, use rules, I should say, at this point, no. So are you just like leaving them there and not ever moving them or?
Well, that tends to happen with older units, you know, newer units tend to get used, older units get stored and some of them are called gypsies.
Right.
That, that leave them there, so I was curious.
Gotcha.
Curious if you had a policy or will be doing that.
Definitely not looking to have units that are not being used. You know, the research that I've done in the industry, you know, the, the nicer cleaner units, the ones that offer security, you know, that, that have, uh, some of the tech as far as like taking care of the billing and all that kind of stuff, tend to draw people who have nicer type rigs is what is my, been my experience, what I've researched thus far. So I'm definitely trying to make this not just something that's by the side of the road with a chain link fence and gravel, I mean, I want it to be nicer than just the basics, so do I have a policy set, no, but I probably want to see that happen, I haven't even thought that far as far as somebody just leaving one there and never ever moving it.
And you go through the expense of having to evict them, if you will.
Sure.
Have you ever owned a RV lot before?
First time, first time, I'm, I own several commercial properties, residential properties, I'm a contractor, build, remodel, so I've, I've done a lot in the construction business. This is my first venture into, uh, RV storage, so I'm very excited to. This is my first venture into RV storage, so I'm very excited to get this project going.
The time, 7 to 9? Because you're up against eight homes and I realize you're starting out there and I don't wanna really impede that, but if there are complaints in the future because of too early, too late, that affects the neighbors, would you be willing, if that should occur, to put a time lock on your gate?
Sure, absolutely.
I just think, you know, the, the people that live next to it, as you have too, and I appreciate your, your 20-foot buffer and the trees there, that's good. Is there going to be a sign that people can contact you or somebody?
So most of the, most of the business is done pretty much online. You know, it's amazing how much that type of, these type businesses have gone that route with tenancy. So really the guard shack is just gonna be a small office set up to actually meet an tenant the initial time. Each tenant will have a code key, their own code to get into the unit itself, so it's gonna record that. So it's really not heavy personnel and it's real, there'll be a web presence and then there'll be a number to call and we obviously can arrange some sort of a meeting if somebody needs to, when they need to meet onsite.
So there's nobody in the guard shack?
There's not, it's not a serviced office, you know, gonna be manned, you know, with office hours or anything like that. That's not the plan at this point.
Again, I go back to where I am. If there's a problem with the electronics or the gate doesn't open, you know, you get somebody, you know, there's a call button that actually calls one of the proprietors there and they can do whatever they can do or come down, so. If it's posted, it lets people know that. I think that's for me.
Hi, like I said, I appreciate, a lot of thought went into it so far, a lot of background. So I also had a question that was answered about the timing and also I guess I assumed that the guard shack would be manned constantly, so that was a question of why have access and a guard, but you answered that. The, I'm assuming that the city engineer looked at exiting onto McHenry. You know, I mean, people coming, coming down there pretty quick. You know, the width of the driveway out of the RV storage that, you know, they're gonna be probably swinging into both lanes. Just, I'm sure it's appropriate and per code, but that could be, could be an issue. You know, I appreciate the, the trees, you know, going above and beyond the setback. That's a good neighbor policy, goes a long way.
Commissioner Castellanos?
I have one question. Did you have somebody at this meeting, a couple of meetings ago? Cause we were just talking about the need.
Oh, wow, no, I did not. The staff has said that that has come up though, that people inquire down here, you know, like, is there a place I can store?
The only question I have is, what is your signage gonna look like?
You know, it's a good, it would be very similar to what you see going up and down McHenry already. I haven't, I don't know if I formally, I don't know if there was a formal signage proposal in what we put in, but it'll be, it will, you know, the bank is there, Ace is there, Hilliard's there, it'll look something in, in the family of that, is the plan.
So you're aware that we have a specific size and all that kinda stuff?
Absolutely.
We don't allow pole signs anymore. It'll be a monument sign of some sort and it's a calculation of your frontage to how much signage you can have.
Whatever's with the requirement, I'm more than willing to do it, what I need to do.
Yeah, but I, I also appreciate, you know, the sensitivity of the neighbors behind you and I'm glad to hear those gonna, the lights are gonna be cone, so the neighbors aren't gonna see light all the time and, yeah. I have no other questions.
So my questions are, what are the hours for being lit? Do the lights go off at nine o'clock?
You know what, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten the detail of that so far. It's like at night, it makes sense that they would go off with, you know, I guess I'd work with staff on that, they would go off with, it makes sense to have some sort of security light all the time cause you don't wanna, you know, to go lit and have somebody try to get in there, then there's no deterrent. I've already worked with Arvin Home Systems and they've done all the commercial stuff I've done as far as the cameras and the alarming and things like that and they've cooked up something really cool. But I think there'll be some light there, but again, it probably is a work in progress versus, I don't have a concrete answer for you. The city didn't ask me to turn them off at nine o'clock at this point.
I think to, to be a good neighbor, that's pretty important. Because the last thing these residents need is light pollution from your project. They actually make a, a new LED light, if you will, that is multidirectional, but it shoots straight down and you don't have to buy the shield like we talked about. I worked, I'm familiar with a project in Lowdy where it was a renovation to a football stadium and same thing, neighbors complained about it and the decision was made to bring in these LED lights and they're on till midnight sometimes and the neighbors don't complain at all. And especially with being right up against the, the neighbors, light pollution I think is definitely a concern. But that being said, thank you for being sensitive and having this 20-foot buffer. That's pretty critical, cause the tree, once the trees start growing, that actually creates a, a noise buffer as well. Two other concerns that I have are, looks like your traffic flows show multidirectional through the back portion. What are you going to do to avoid major traffic jams and people laying on their horns in the backyards of the residence if there's a traffic jam in the back there?
That's probably, is that an MCR question? Can they, can he come up while I'm here?
Sure.
Just state your name, please, and your address.
Okay, my name's James Hanley. I'm from MCR, 1242 Dupont Court, Manteca. So we kept 30-foot aisles back there and we ran some turning movements. They won't make it together, but ideally they would see each other coming around the corner and they'd be able to at least, you know, give way or stop and make it, make their way around there.
Would you guys consider making it one way?
One way?
One way in as a big loop?
We could, it would cause problems backing into certain stalls. You would either have to, you'd always have to go front in to certain stalls, but it's something that we could consider.
Other question is the traffic enclosure, or the trash enclosure. It's located outside the fence and how are you intending to keep the transients from digging through your dumpster? Because the, I currently have a storage unit that, across the street, that's even behind the fence and I can't even access it and it's behind the fence, so. What, I guess what is the purpose of keeping the trash enclosure outside the fence?
Originally it was access. Yeah, for the company, yeah. But if it needs to be reconsidered, we can reconsider it.
I'm just worried about people, I mean, Escalon's a small town and see a dumpster and I wanna get rid of my trash. I'm gonna throw it in the trash enclosure that's free range, so.
And that can certainly be a problem. But with most of our other commercial businesses, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, that don't have any gates, all the trash enclosures are out, the banks have them out. So it would more be on a code enforcement or police issue side. Staff does, is not concerned about them having it on the outside. For access for Jilton, it's probably the better place to put it, but good thought.
All right. That's all the questions I have for the time being.
Any other comments?
Evening. David Bellinger, 1420 Winterbrook Street, right behind the development. Couple things, I guess we'll start with the lighting. How tall are the light bulbs gonna be? Do you have any idea? Just looking at the diffusion into the, I know if you put diffusers and stuff, but if they're so high, no matter what diffuser you put on it, it's gonna bleed. So that'd be a question that we've got.
That's scope of design is, that's beyond this, this application. We'll definitely look at it. Green code requirement, you have photometric requirements, foot handle requirements.
Sir, could you come to the microphone, please?
Name and address too, please.
Yes, Sean San Diego, MCR Engineering, 1242 Dupont Court, Commissioners. Just to answer your question though, yeah, the, the height of it, most likely LED projected straight down, flat top. It's typical to any kind of commercial application today, just because of green code requirements. We don't have the luxury yet having these bright lights any longer.
Is it something that's gonna be similar to what's currently existing at the Ace Hardware in the bank? Is that something we can, someone would expect?
I haven't taken a look at those personally. I could look at them on the way home.
Just something, a question, cause even though they're a fair distance away, they throw a lot of light our direction. Even with those buildings outside the buildings, they do throw a lot of light. So if they're not, if they're not, if they're the same, they're not gonna directionally go down, they'll come to our properties. Is it a concern for us?
Absolutely, and it's a concern that will be assessed during the building permit application in which staff will have an opportune time to review the cut sheets of the light, review the photometrics of the light, as well as the timing of them going off, if at all we go that way.
That would be, or at least reduced so that definitely knocks down a high percentage of the lights that are coming our direction towards our homes.
Yeah, they, uh-
The desire is to not to walk out at, you know, eight o'clock at night when it's dark outside and I don't need any lights in my yard to see what's going on out there. That would not be useful to great homeownership at that point. That's a concern for us. I'm not sure how to do this for you guys, but basically I'm at the property with probably the least amount of, I'm on the, the property that's in the middle of the, right where, that one right there, that is mine. So right where the landscaping ends and we start the RV storage again to the west, I would like to propose an amendment to change from having RVs there that are 12 and a half, 13-foot tall, that are above the line of the fence, to something that's more of a boat storage and have it permitted to where just it's a boat storage or something like that, that's a shorter profile. I don't wanna take revenue away from the business or anything like that, but small rendering here that I'm gonna see when I walk out in my backyard. I'm in the process right now of building a pool right close to selecting a contractor to start building and I don't wanna walk out and see four foot above the fence line toy haulers. Honestly, that's gonna devalue my property. But if we can-
You wanna circulate it?
But if we can move it, move it to where the first four, maybe five spots, something along those lines or boats, most boats, ski boats or anything like that. Eight, maybe 10 foot, but it's a light bar. It's not a big box that's right up against the fence usually if it's a boat. Houseboat would probably be a problem. Something like that or a big yacht, but most boats don't go over the general eight foot, eight, nine, 10 foot high, but it wouldn't be the same profile as the back of a toy hauler or a big 35-foot fifth wheel or something along those lines. So that's something that is a huge concern for my property, along with probably the rest of the residents with the lighting issues. I'm sure there's other folks that have questions about that.
A couple of things. One, we haven't seen a lighting plan out here yet, so it's hard to know where they're facing. Are they, are they up against the 20-foot buffer facing the parking? Or are they scattered in amongst the trees? I, I don't know.
I would imagine they'd have to be on the RV storage side of the landscaping. If you're gonna have fast-growing tall trees, you're gonna block them as soon as you-
The point being is, we can't tell, but what we've got here.
But I lose, I lose the landscaping right there at the corner of my, in the backyard of my house.
And you gotta, you gotta point there, a few of those spots.
If we could, you know, there would-
Might be there. I don't think every one of them needs to be like that.
I'd say four. If we had four of them where it was designated for, you know, something shorter with a height limit of maybe eight foot, you know, you're still gonna get your revenue if you're storing boats and RVs. If, you know, you can designate those for the boats, that wouldn't, you know, impact my enjoyment in my backyard, basically. So we can consider that.
Commission, you could add a condition that would limit designated spots to a certain height if you choose.
Because I don't have the landscape that goes past that where they would be backing up in my visual range and I don't wanna take the revenue away from the site, so I thought that'd be a reasonable compromise. Not impact the project too, too much. Okay, I guess a question I would have is, why do you guys need a dumpster on the property? Is that something the city requires?
We do.
If it's RV storage, you do?
All commercials properties are required to have trash.
Just curious, like, okay, nobody's manning the property, we're storing everything, it's like, why do you need a dumpster?
I would think as people are cleaning out their RVs, getting ready to leave and store them after their trip, they'll have some bags of trash.
Oh, that's nice to know for them.
We just wanna prevent it from being thrown all over the lot in case-
Right, yeah, I would agree with that. So anyways, those are my concerns. I guess the other question is on the fencing, since the, the brick wall that's already existing there is considered part of, is that considered my property or part of the development's property? I'm a little concerned with if there's theft issues in the future. If there's a concern or a desire to put razor wire anywhere in my visual range, that'll be a concern of mine. I don't wanna look like I have a prison behind me. So I don't want barbed wire fence or anything like that that goes above my level of view in my backyard as well. So if-
Barbed wire, razor wire is not allowed in the city.
That's a concern that me and the wife had, is like, I don't wanna see that. It'll make it more look like a prison yard with the lights. I don't wanna see it, so. But if we can address those concerns, that works for me.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chris Parker, 1460 Winterbrook. I just bought the place in February and got here a little late, slid in. I'm not sure actually what you guys discussed, but I know when we first moved in, a couple of neighbors had talked about the land being for sale for a while and stuff and not exactly knowing what was going on with it, but some of us kinda put together somewhat of an idea and I'm sure the balls are already rolling and in progress, but making an option of people who own the houses on that back street to purchase that property to extend on their property. And I know it's hard to get eight people to buy property and extend that, but if three or four, to divide that up somewhat evenly to, it might not look the prettiest, but I don't know. If that would be some quarter of, some sort of option or not, and that's obviously with the owner and what they wanna do. And if they own the whole property, moving lines differently, but I don't know. In my mind, I would, I wouldn't mind obviously going my, my section, at least my section deep, if not, sorry, if not, I'm talking with my hand, open it up wider, do purchase more of that property, if that's an option. Maybe like I said, maybe it's too late, but it's, if it's an option or what that even entails, what that would even do or how to even go about doing that. Cause if some of the neighbors kind of like having nothing behind them, if they can just purchase more of that property.
Are you talking about purchasing the applicant's property?
Correct. Not just one person, the whole thing, but if neighbors, let's just assume every other person wanted to do that of those eight.
Well, you'll need to go talk to him. All we can address is what's in front of us.
Right, I'm, I'm, okay, yeah, that's what I was adjusting, but what, does the city have anything against something like that? Cause I obviously don't even know.
That property is, is commercial property, so, you know, if you're going to turn it into residential, I think you gotta rezonate, don't you? So that's not just a simple agreement with the applicant here, that's, that's a process.
Okay.
So.
There would be some lot merging and lot lines needing to be drawn, so you'd have to do a few maps to kinda straighten it out. And yeah, it would be a lot easier if-
I'm not saying you can't do it, but, but you better get moving.
Right, right, that's why I was saying, I didn't hear anything about this until we got the letter and that's why if I said something, at least if you guys, I don't know who to talk to. So I figured on that end, if it was an option, I guess, if it is, I'd be interested.
If he was interested in selling.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And you could make it work, it might be something we could do, but it would have a big process to it of rezoning and mapping and that kinda stuff, which would be costly.
Right.
And so I'm sure-
There would be a cost, there'd be a dollar amount.
Yeah, there would be costs to getting all that stuff done, yeah.
Okay, I guess that's all I had, thank you.
Sorry, I was sitting there, apologies. Question about the gates. We had hours of operation, does that mean they're automatically gonna lock between nine at night and seven in the morning unless someone's in there at 8:45 and doesn't get out to let them out and that's about it? Okay, and then another question in talking with my other neighbor who is not here, but in reviewing the zoning, it's- but in reviewing the zoning, it's Zone C two, it's not, according to the books, it's not zoned for RV storage. Are they asking for a variance or how does that work?
Uh, the municipal code was recently updated and it went into effect September twentieth, that this type of use now allows for a conditional use permit.
So it's the one that's online, is not accurate then?
It was prior, yeah, it hasn't been updated yet. Um, it was prior not allowed, but that was recently changed to allow of a conditional use permit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing at seven forty-three PM. Okay. Any other follow-up, Commissioners? Start this side again.
I would, I would like to stand. With the concern with the lighting and stuff, why is there no information on location of the lights, where they're gonna look like? What direction they're gonna be pointing?
Right.
That's a critical point, especially for all the neighbors.
Yeah, as part of their, the final submittals for the project, they have to submit a photometric plan, and so it's a chart of the property, like this tentative parcel map, that'll identify where the lights are, and then they ha, the chart is full of numbers, kinda like Battleship with all these, just completely filled with numbers, and it has the, how bright the light is. And so the engineer reviews that to ensure that the light going on to the adjacent properties is, is negligent. The lights will have shields on them. We didn't receive a lighting plan as part of the submittal, but staff is very conscious, the applicant is very conscious about minimizing the light to the adjacent property owners. If commission wanted to put in a condition of approval, that maybe the lights along the back of those houses shut off at a certain time, and maybe the other lights further out on the property remain on for the security. That's definitely an option.
I would like to add a condition, two conditions. First one, and these are requested by Mr. Bellinger, that the, if there are any lights adjacent to the trees along the south side, that they face away from the property into the lot. So to avoid any light pollution into the backyards. And secondly, the first four stalls, the forty-foot stalls on the south side, as requested by Mr. Bellinger, have those specifically designated for low-height vehicle trailers.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
We already closed the public hearing.
You could reopen it.
We wanna reopen it?
Well, are you done with what you were saying? You should finish your thought.
Okay. And then last thing is just a request to look at the traffic pattern in that big loop. We don't wanna have any traffic jams and people laying on their horns while the neighbors are trying to sleep on a Saturday morning, and people are fighting trying to get their trailers out to go to the lake. That's all I have at the moment.
Now, before you do that, I like the, the width of the driveway going east, and, and then again heading west. Do you know what the width of that is? It's thirty-five feet in the back.
Thirty feet. There's a dimension on there.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet, okay, and again, I'm in an RV lot there that's similar to this, and that's not a problem. There's obviously more than one person will show up at a time, but they're not necessarily in the same area. And as you look at that, you have to be able to go both ways or you won't be able to park your vehicle. So I'm looking at the, those four lots there that are gonna be restricted in height. Right in that area there in the middle, is there a left-hand turn to go around the opposite way? Or is it all just...
There is, yeah. You go in through the gate and there's those first sets, and then the dump station is right there on the left. At that point, you can either turn right and go down the south side, or you can turn left and go up the north side.
Okay, yeah, that seems fine.
Okay, we will reopen the public hearing at seven forty-eight PM.
Thank you.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Yunus Wahid. My address, one thousand five hundred Winterbrooks. And my question is, I wanna make sure the RV, nobody gonna leave there. No people can live there. In the time, if you can, from seven to eight, if you have children to go to school, they can sleep early. That's, that's only my...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we close the public hearing? Okay, we will close the public hearing again at seven forty-eight. Commissioner Castellanos.
I, I like the project. I, I know the community, there is a need for more RV storage space. I like the idea of, at least on the, the portion of the parcel that backs up to the residence, to have those lights shining in the northwardly direction away from those homes. The four easterly stalls that are adjacent to the, the residence. I think we should have a state of height limit as opposed to just saying not a high one, you know, maybe eight feet tall.
How tall is the, how tall is that?
The wall is eight feet tall.
Eight feet, so we, we don't want to go above the wall. But, yeah, I, I like the idea of seeing more development along the Kenray and meet the needs of these people that, if they have a wide side yard, they're parking their RVs on the property.
Yeah, I add another condition. I really appreciate the applicant being considerate for the residence, but we can't forget our neighbors for the First Baptist Church as well. So along the north property line, if you can put some sort of tree as well, just to soften, soften that, or it says that that's vacant, but isn't that church property right now?
It's church property, but it's field, isn't it, right now? It's not developed.
It's filled right now.
Yeah, their southern lot is a field.
So we shouldn't have to do any sort of landscaping to be a good neighbor?
I don't think that's an issue at this time.
Okay.
It's a pretty large lot. That, that end of it is, is pretty empty.
Okay.
Their buildings don't even start till after Hilliard Buildings, actually.
Okay. Commissioner Sarkozy?
Yeah, I, I agree with those four, four or five lots, however many it works out to be to limit the height. You know, it may actually work out to your benefit, because if you put a thirty-foot trailer there, that's gonna be, be a really tight turn, so you probably want a smaller, shorter unit there anyway, which is perfect for a, for a boat. Right where it says parcel C in the middle, that's a pretty tight little jog to get out. I, I don't have any concerns with the size of the lanes. I think it's, it just looks out of perspective, but I, that, that's a lot of, lot of space to do that. And I just, I just recommend as the lighting plan gets developed, that staff takes extra, extra thought and care into, and I'm sure they will, to, to accommodate the residence.
I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. It's, it's nice to have some input when we're looking at these projects here, especially when they affect existing neighborhoods. And I agree with all of the additional conditions that our chairman has put forth. I agree with the stalls, I agree with the lighting and the time of the lighting. It's a project that needs, it needs to come in here, and I want you to know that we can also reevaluate this project over time. If there is a problem, it's not done, it's set in stone, there's other things we can look at. But from what we see right here, you know, Escalon's a small town, there's people up against P and L, there's people up against the railroad, and, you know, and everybody's affected by the railroad. So if we can limit any of the concerns that you have here and now, I think that's the positive way to go. And if there's a concern down the road, by all means, you know, bring it up. So I like the project, too.
I have a question for Commissioner Danziger. What are the hours of operation where you currently hold your RV?
Well, it's a different situation. It's not up against any homes. It's up against a Vista Continuation School thing in Austin, and the owner has the house next door to it. So as far as I know, it's twenty-four hours a day. But again, it's, it's a different setup there. You're not, you don't have eight neighbors, you know, parked right next to you there. And again, it's on Austin Road, so there's a lot of light coming off of one-twenty in there. He's got halogen lights, by the way, the big bucket lights, and there are no shields. So his concern is more safety and keeping vandals out, which people come in and do. It's happened. So hopefully, you know, this is gonna work out for everybody.
Last condition, we need to be respectful of, of what the gentleman just said and have a condition that no RVs will be occupied as a residence.
And I just have one more, one more question with the, the dump station there. I know when we had an RV and we would do it in Manteca, I mean, there's obviously some odors associated with that. Is the, is it just gonna be kinda self-policed if you have a little spillage? You gotta, you gotta hose bib there and you're, they're gonna be able to clean it up themselves? Or is that something maybe that your attendant would maybe look over once a, once a day if they're there?
That was actually a new requirement that is, we kinda put in at the, toward the end with staff, so I haven't even gotten to that far as far as research. I mean, it will definitely be maintained. There's obviously some landscape. So I would have a maintenance crew come through on a weekly basis, and that, if there's an issue there, that would be, I don't even really know exactly what those entail. All my neighbors come home, flip off the cap on their sewer, city sewer, and dump right into that is what they do. So we're just trying to add an extra service that, you know, you don't have that all over Escalon after a busy weekend. So exactly what that entails, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know the details of yet, other than it will be first class.
Great, thank you.
Just an overall comment to kinda reiterate what Commissioner Danziger said, that if this project gets approved, we highly request the neighbors, I'm kinda putting you in charge, Mr. Bellinger, if, if this project gets approved and there are issues, please gather your neighbors and come back and see us.
It's just, at this point, you addressed all my concerns, other than the lighting, which nobody has seen yet, so. It sounds like we've all got the same ideas of limiting the light pollution that goes into the neighborhood and reducing the number of lights that are on at night and that sort of thing, so right now it sounds good. We'll see how it goes when we get the lights up and what it looks like.
All right. So... The first item we have to figure out is, we made the findings correct? Do we have any comments, other comments regarding the tentative parcel maps? Any site and architecture approval or anything else related to the conditional use permits? Okay, so do we have to make a motion?
Make a motion to make the findings, yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to make the findings as required per section sixteen point zero three point zero seven for tentative parcel maps, seventeen point five four point zero four zero for site and architecture approval, and seventeen point five six point zero through zero for conditional use permits?
And you can do it all in one motion for number three, four, and five?
Okay. So we will amend that and add, we will also do, in that same motion, we're trying to find the project sequel Class fifteen categorically exempt under section fifteen three one five minor land divisions, and Class thirty-two categorically exempt under section fifteen three three two infill development projects. And finally, approve the tentative parcel map, site and architecture and conditional use permit applications with the conditions of approval as proposed below or as modified per hour conditions.
And just to go over one more time what those modified conditions are. One, the lights on the south end of the property adjacent to the neighborhood are very much face inward, have shields, very sensitive to that. The four stalls adjacent to Mr. Bellinger's property on the corner be designated for vessels less than eight feet in height that no RV boats or trailers on the lot are allowed to be occupied. Was that the three? Were you adding that the lights turn off at a certain time?
Dim or reduce.
Dim or reduce?
If that's possible.
I think a dimming feature would definitely be helpful, so.
That, could that be an issue with the police department? You know, on lighting, no lighting?
Me, I, I would imagine it could be a security issue, so...
Well, why don't we add, could we add a condition that once the photometrics plan is reviewed, that we offer that to PD to review one more time, as well as the installation of a dimmer to lower the light level within public safety limits after nine o'clock to minimize any impact to the adjacent neighbors?
Thank you.
Keeping in mind, I guess, when I mentioned the lights on the south side, I also was, wanted to reinforce the lights on the northern edge as well, because the neighbors don't wanna look out their bedroom window and see a bright shining light looking straight in the window. So anything that's directly in the line of sight of those neighbors. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion to, to approve one through five with the noted conditions.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda. Application eighteen dash six nine one conditional use permit. This is, uh, the property address, I just had it.
Eighteen thirty-five Coley.
Eighteen thirty-five Coley Avenue, Escalon. Staff report.
Thank you. Audience, you are more than welcome to stay through the next project, but if you wanted to go, you may do that also. Sorry, Manuel. I don't think the audience will object to your project. Okay, Commissioners, our second project tonight is located at eighteen thirty-five Coley. And the property owner is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to expand the existing residential use in a commercial zone. The applicant proposes the addition of living space in the attic area, adding a one-car attached garage to the main house, and expanding on the second prop, uh, second house, expanding the second floor not to exceed the footprint of the first floor. So this property is across from the post office and to the north just a little bit. And the surrounding uses, a lot of this area on Coley is C two. There's various businesses, various non-conforming residential properties. There's the post office. To the west, we have open... To the west, we have open space, Main Street Park. If you choose to approve this project, you do need to make the findings for conditional use permits. And the project will qualify for an exemption for existing facilities. Staff's recommending approval of the project subject to conditions of approval or as modified by planning commission. So the applicant owns the property at 1835 Coley. It's a 6,250 square foot lot in the C2 zone. There's two existing structures. There's the main house, which fronts up on Coley. And then towards the rear of the property, there's a two-car garage with a studio apartment above it. It's currently non-conforming because it's a commercial zone and it's got residential on it. As we talked about at our last meeting with the other conditional use permit for the storage lot on the C2 zone, non-conforming statuses happen for a variety of reasons. It could be through annexations, amendments to the zoning code, or rezoning. And we're a little bit unclear because of the, how long ago this property has been in existence, exactly what caused it to be non-conforming. The main house was estimated to be built in 1910 and the secondary building on the property about 1945. So all of this was happening prior to the city becoming the city in 1957. It was when it belonged out in the county. We did some research, but we really couldn't pinpoint when this property became zoned commercial. Both structures on site were not well-maintained by the prior property owners. They weren't exactly structurally sound. They were in dire need of rehabilitation. And so when the applicant purchased the property, he began the renovations to make them much more habitable. Even if the expansion request is not approved, the applicant is still allowed to remodel the homes and they needed it. So he realizes that he's remodeling them and that if it's not approved, he can continue the remodel, just not the expansion. He would be able to work with the same footprint as when he bought the property. So the proposed changes, the main house fronting Coley, it currently, or as of when he bought it, has a porch, main living area, and a screened-in rear patio. The applicant's looking to expand the front porch, increase the first floor living area. It has empty attic space currently, so he's looking to rehab that to be living space and add a single-car attached garage, which the, the main house has no garage currently. So that's a nice addition. And then the chart below just shows you what the existing square footages are and what the proposed square footages are. The property in the back, the lower floor is a two-car garage. And then there's a studio apartment above it. And the applicant is simply proposing to expand that second floor living area to completely cover the front area of the garage. So there's no expansion of the footprint of the building. It's just increasing the second floor living area. And staff is recommending approval of this project. When we have commercial use, when we have residential use in the commercial zone, it requires a conditional use permit to be able to expand it. And that's because you hear of holdout properties, the areas become more and more commercial, but there's one house that just is not selling or wanting to become commercial. And so through this process, they wouldn't be able to ever expand it and eventually it would become commercial. We don't see an issue with this project. We don't see this area becoming commercial for quite some time. You know, we look 25, 50 years. Do we see, you know, once they rehab it, obviously the residential use will continue longer, but we don't see this area becoming commercial. Two parcels down, we recently, within the last few years, approved Lear Village, the old police department, city hall building. It's going to be eight residential use units, brand new. Those, that project's occurring right now. So we see this neighborhood remaining residential for quite some time. So we don't see any reason not to approve, expanding this residential use. We think it's a good project. It's improving the safety of the, of the property, increasing the aesthetics for the whole neighborhood. We sent out a public hearing notice in the newspaper and it was sent to every property owner within 300 feet. We didn't receive any phone calls or inquiries from the surrounding neighborhood about the project. We sent it to the outside agencies and any comments received were incorporated into the conditions of approval. This project also has a 10-day appeal period, which expires October 23rd if it's approved. Staff's recommendation, open the public hearing, take any public testimony, close the public hearing, make the findings required for conditional use permits, find the project, project sequoet exempt, and, and approve the conditional use permit subject to conditions of approval as proposed below or modified as needed by the planning commission.
Okay, any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, you know where I'm going to go.
I didn't start with you, Commissioner Danziger. I was looking at Commissioner Castellanos.
I apologize.
I have a question. With the expanded footprints, what is the building to site ratio? Is that still within?
The 65%, yeah.
Because it's not residential zone, does that ratio still apply?
Yeah, you treat it as, when you have the residence, you treat it as the residential standards.
Commissioner Sarkozy?
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Danziger?
Yeah. What is the opinion of the city when you don't know when it's been rezoned to C2? And there's a non-conforming use that's virtually being torn down and redone? Not against the project, but this is a definition. When do you say, how much of this project is so new that we're going to return it to what the zoning is, C2?
If it's a residential use, they are allowed to build within the same footprint unless they get a conditional use to expand it.
Well, I'm going with the non-conforming. Now, I'm trying to see a, the way the city can clean things up, make it reasonable for your staff or you down the road. So if you've got something like this and you have others in town, I think we should go through them and try to rezone them. These parcels, anyway, this should be residential. It's going to be, once it's done, residential for 100 years, you know. There's three or four Diane's are going to come and go in the interim. And it just seems a little awkward to me that we're seeing them, you know, time after time here, that we don't do that. Personally, you know, I like to keep C2. It's a tax revenue for the city. I've been out to this site, you know, it's definitely residential. It's right in the residential area. I don't know why I got zone C2, to be quite honest with you. And I think it needs to change. This property should be residential. And is it an R3 because there's two different, or there's, is there three different dwellings or just two?
Two.
Okay, so.
Two dwellings.
It's just an R. Yeah, that would be something I would put out to you. As you bring them here, I feel conflicted to approve things that don't conform and then we make it even worse by, you know, turning it into something that, that it isn't. So that would be my comment there. There was a lighting study done for Lear. You, you did, you were talking about the last project.
We'll get a photometric plan for his, right?
Okay, I had a concern with that project there because of streetlights for Lear. There's on their east, southeast side, there's a light that's 40 feet up the pole. It's, it's a lot higher up than most streetlights. The next one is at Third Street and Coley on the northwest side, northeast side. And there is no lights down Coley. So because this is a, a big project here and it's taking over, you know, when you have our new developments, about every three and a half homes, there's a streetlight and it, that covers both sides of the street. There is nothing over there. Have we considered, have you done a, a light survey that's going to show that this project would need a streetlight?
We did not consider that, no.
I think you should. As things happen down Coley, it'd be nice to lighten it up. That's a crime area. And, and I think that, you know, the light's going to be a deterrent. And at some point, we should do these things, you know, as new projects come along. If you're remodeling your house, putting in smoke detectors, spark arresters, what have you, we ought to look at the lighting and, and make a determination, okay, well, if we're going to do this, at this point, we're going to require somebody to do a light. And, you know, it could be a city light. I wouldn't say the house should have to pay for it like an LLD, but I, I think, I think we should have a streetlight in there. And that's it.
Okay. With that, we will open the public hearing at 8:13 PM. For our lone member of the general public, if you wish to share anything, please state your name and your address.
Emmanuel Sandoval, 1835 Coley. I bought the project. It's a fun project for me, learning about the project, stuff like that. I believe it was an old barn at one time and somebody added on to it. Al had come out, looked at the property. Definitely not built to today's standards back then. So that's why I decided to kind of conform it to today's standards. That lady that had lived there, lived there for 30 years. She was known as a cat lady. So just the animal stuff that was there needed to be cleaned up. I mean, just, I have people walking down the street say it smells better now. So it's definitely an improvement to the area. So I haven't gotten anything negative from the people walking by. I get thumbs up, people taking pictures. It's definitely an improvement to Escalon. I'm going to do new sidewalks. If I want to put a light in, I'll put a light in. It's, it's, it's whatever I can do to improve.
I guess my, my first question, I, I just drove by on my way here, but, you know, most of the residences along Coley are a single-story. And with this thing being on jacks now with the beams, I mean, it's really tall.
Yeah, it's obviously going to come back down. The footing, I'm going to say from where it was sitting before, might be about six inches taller. The roof line's the same, everything's the same. It is up because for them to do the new foundation. So I'm going to say in all, I wish I kind of, it was about 16 inches to 18 inches tall before you got to the floor. And then now it'll, I think they have it set at 24 inches. So it's six, it's not that much taller than what it was. It's, it's, I don't know. I don't consider it a two-story because it's not a full eight-foot, you know, we have an eight-foot house and then you have a second story and then a roof on top of that. Obviously, the second story, that, that roof line just has so much space in it that we're using that. And we're not even able to use the whole thing. We have to come in five feet, you know, to get your, your height measurements. The section that we tore down in the back, it's just going to be a lot easier because we're matching the roof line coming back to get the height inside. So the footprint of it staying the same. We're adding the garage because the city code wanted another off-street parking. So you have two units and you have two off-street parkings, which again is an improvement.
So is your plan to build this and then turn around and sell it?
No, no, no. I might, I, I'm a jokester, so don't, you know, don't, you know, and I probably shouldn't even say this. I'm going to get myself in trouble. But no, my plan as a keep is as, as a residence for myself. I have a disabled sister and maybe when we get old or something like that, she could be on one side and I could be on the other. And this is my joke, so don't, don't take, I always say, you know, people, oh, you know, I say, well, if the city council denies me, I'll still finish it. When I die, I'll donate it to you guys. And it's just, you know.
Well, you know.
That's a joke, that's a joke. Like I said, it's, it's a joke, so. It's a fun project. I mean, I'm having a blast out there. You know, the contractors out there are good. It's definite an improvement to the whole area. And like I said, I haven't gotten anything negative about it, people walking by. The place in the back, you know, like I said, they built that in 45. And I'm just, you know, expanding just over the garage. I'm not adding anything big or any of that stuff. So the whole footprint of the project, I think it's only going to be expanded by the single-car garage, which is 363 square feet added to it. We are using the existing attic space, but the, the footprint of it is pretty much staying the same, except for that single-car garage.
I do have a concern regarding the paint colors that you selected.
Okay.
Black and white isn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily jive with all of the other residents along Coley. So if, if we can add a condition to soften those colors instead of black and white. Since you're a jokester, so am I.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a Pittsburgh Steelers fan, so if you want to make it black and gold, that's perfectly.
Okay, and you know what? I'll be honest with you, okay? It's, it's cream and chocolate.
Okay.
And I have a house on Glenwood Court that's those, that's exact same colors. And I get a lot of great comments on it. And I have another house down Coley, which is gold and chocolate. So we can go together, look at both of them and see which one you like the best. Those colors, I'm from the Bay Area and, you know, they do a lot of remodel work down there and I've seen a lot of designers and stuff like that. And those two colors really kind of appeal to me for like a nice, rich look.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's cream and chocolate.
The way that it was produced, it just looks like black and white.
Right, no, I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Did you bring this to?
And, and just.
They're at my desk, yeah.
Just so you know, the comment about you and your sister is on YouTube. So it will be memorialized from now.
There you go.
YouTube is in existence.
She's going to hold you to it.
There you go. Oh, yeah, no, no, no. She's got no one left behind me, so that's. But yeah, so that's, that's, and like I said, I, it's the same color scheme as my place on 1506 Glenwood Court. And like I said, if you talk to all my neighbors there, they're all upset with me because I'm making my house so nice that it's making all their wives upset that their husbands aren't keeping up with, with me, I guess, so.
I'll let you deal with that.
All right.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I was waiting for.
Sure, I'll, I'll go. So I just, I, I think you answered it, but it's just, it's just two units. The additional attic space is accessed from the inside of.
Yes, yes, there'll be some stairs. I don't know, we got plans. There'll be some stairs that go up to that, that, and it, it'll be a one-bed and one-bath up there. So there'll be inside stairs that just go up there, so.
Okay, okay. No, I, I think this is exactly what is needed in that, that area. And we talk about, it's, we call it an infill, although there's a structure there already. It basically is an infill and it's significant improvement, to say the least, so thank you.
I haven't really, I, I stay there and I haven't experienced a lot of crime. I know you mentioned it's kind of a crime area there, but I haven't personally experienced anything. I don't know what the police end up doing.
It's just up and down Coley. I don't know the specific addresses there, but every month, the police department puts out a crime.
Right, 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 yeah.
And all and around that area seems to be the majority of things. And I think a lot of it's because of no light, you know, it's just dark.
Right, oh, no, I agree with you, yeah.
It's just dark over there. I'm not making any comments about people in the neighborhood. I think it's just dark.
Right.
And makes it an attractive nuisance.
Right, right.
I love the project. I, I walked through it. I drove out there and went to look at Lear and went to look at yours. And gee, that is one solid job you're doing out there.
All right, no, we, we, it's funny, you know, if, you know, the piers that were removed that the house was sitting on, you know, they're outside, we have to get them removed, but it's just amazing the amount of concrete that's going into the new foundation to what it, and it lasted 100 years. I wish they maintained it. I mean, it was, it was an interesting place, you know. I mean, Al had come by and looked at it and I showed it to him and I said, I can't do anything here. You know, I just, you just, you know. To do any kind of remodel work to the house, you would have had to do what you had to do. I mean, it was just, you know, the, the top plate and the bottom plate, it had a stud every four foot on center. It just had long boards nailed from the top plate to the bottom plate. And that was the walls. So you just, to today's standard, anybody would have had to do anything with a permit would be doing what I, exactly what I'm doing.
Well, you know, in that area there, there's going to be urban renewal.
Right.
And you may be, you, first there's Lear and now, now there's you. And down the road, somebody next to you is going to say, I want to do what he did.
Right, right, right.
And, and, and the neighborhood will change, which is, you know, not necessarily good, bad, or whatever, but, you know, is the housing stock becomes newer.
Right, right, right.
And I like the fact that there's multiple uses on there and it's low. And I like the fact that there's multiple uses on there, and it's close to downtown. So people can walk, you and your sister can walk, if that's the thing. And, you know, don't give it to the city.
No, no, no.
Give it to the low-income housing people there, if you wanna really look down the road and will it away. Because there's very little retirement.
Right, 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 yeah. I'm with you.
Places here, and, and low income by standards in Escalon, you know, is up to seventy-four, five thousand for moderate income. So, I mean, when someone says low, moderate income, we're not talking about people that are making twelve thousand dollars a year.
All right.
You know, we're talking about people that can afford the rent, but if it gets too high, they can't, so.
Right, right, right. I'm with you, but trust me, I, my income is, I'm below the blow.
Well, I like your project.
Awesome, I thank you, appreciate it. And I appreciate that comment. Like I said, a lot of people, a lot of people really like it, so.
Okay. Anything else from our public?
They all approved. They didn't even need to be here. They're like, ah, shit, it'll happen.
All right, we will close the public hearing at eight twenty-four PM. Any other comments, questions for staff? Okay. Do we have a motion on the table that finds the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section fifteen oh-six, Paragraph B, review of exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act? As well as, do we have a recommendation? Ken, do we have a motion to make a recommendation to the city council? I'm sorry, I'm not reading the right thing.
Jump ahead.
Delete that from YouTube. Where did that go?
Page four of eight on the second staff report.
Actually, I do have a question. So the engineering department noted that the property is currently two parcels, so.
They will have to merge it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we making a recommendation to merge it, or how does?
No, that's just done at the engineer level.
Okay.
They just get, he'll just get a surveyor, rewrite the legal description, submit it to engineering with a merger application, so.
Okay.
It'll be covered.
More simple of the maps.
By approving the conditions of approval.
Okay.
You're acknowledging that.
Well, I do actually have a question, and that is, so the sidewalk in front, if Lear is putting in a new sidewalk, and the applicant is putting in a new sidewalk, what do we do with the sidewalk between the two properties? And the adjacent, and the existing property?
Yeah, until that property owner does some sort of remodel, we really can't force them to redo it. If there's a crack that's a safety hazard, a trip hazard, we can ask them to repair it.
Is there a sidewalk there currently?
I think there is.
Okay.
But yeah, the properties in town that either don't have sidewalk, or it's just kinda getting out of shape, until they do a remodel, we really can't. Unless it's a trip hazard, then we can ask them to repair it, but not pull it all out and replace it.
So back to this, like when the city engineering department makes a comment, will these, do we have to adopt their conditions into our conditional use permit? So for example, removing the stump?
That's in the conditions of approval.
That's in the conditions of approval.
Okay, so we don't have to?
Yeah, it's all included.
Oh, I see, the referral comments?
Correct.
Yeah, so we took the engineer's comments and incorporated it in the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion, now that I'm on the right page, to make the findings as required per Section seventeen point five-six point zero-three-zero for the conditional use permit? Also, in that, we find that the project is Secu-class one, categorically exempt pursuant to Section fifteen oh, fifteen-three-oh-one, Paragraph E, existing facilities, as well as the approval of the conditional use permit application with the conditions of approval as proposed below.
I'd like to add the street light in the, in the conditions. And thank you for stepping up for that. I appreciate it.
So if there's a street light there, is it powered from my property, or is it going to be powered from a city power, because it is a street light?
Well, I, I don't know. Who's gonna buy the light?
I'll buy the light, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, if he buys the light, does the city hook it up? How does it work?
Well, we haven't did that, but the city doesn't have any power out there, so we're gonna have to explore that a little bit more. So where's the power gonna come from, that street light, if there's not other streetlights there?
There's the Lear property and the house next door. There's a pole in the corner of that house that has power, that runs all the way down. We talked about this before, that's why they couldn't underground?
But hooked to a meter, that's gonna be my, I mean, that's, that's my, my concern is that if he was to put in the street light, we'd have to figure out the power and where the charge is gonna go. Because it would be a city street light.
Right.
So the charge would go to us, so how do we do that with PG&E there? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. It's mine. I suggest that we look into.
That we explore it?
Explore, explore putting in the street light.
Explore a possibility.
Well, actually, can we expand upon that? And based off the recent development on Kohli, as you mentioned, both Lear and this project, that we ask staff to review the lighting all along Kohli as that's where the development is happening? Not just this property specifically? Just something to look into.
Are we able to expand the conditions to include the rest of the street? I wasn't going there.
Not, I mean, we could do that as a side thing, is that we, something to look into, but just for this application, we couldn't do that.
Okay.
It's specific to this parcel, this house.
He's not undergrounding. Are you, are you touching the existing electrical?
All above ground. So PG&E comes underground, all cable, I'm sorry, yeah, well, PG&E gas comes underground, and then their electrical is all above.
Right.
And the same with cable and phone is all above. And just to touch on your sidewalk question, when I get the people out there to look at the sidewalk, I was gonna bug the neighbor on the side where the Lear project is, because you are correct, it's just not, it's not that much. I think they're lots fifty foot wide. So I was gonna, you know, give them a call and say, hey, you know what, I'm doing my sidewalk, they're doing theirs. You know, what's your opinion? I don't, you know, I don't know what they are financially and stuff like that. It is a rental for them. But, you know, if it's just a matter of however much you could, I don't know what a sidewalk costs, but if it's three or four thousand dollars for them to do it, I was gonna call the neighbor and say, hey, look, you know, I'm doing it, they're doing it. Do you wanna improve your property and do it? So, so I, because I was thinking the same thing. It'll kinda look new, old, new, then old, so. I can't force it.
Getting back to the power, where does PG&E's power come up to power the house?
At the back of the property. They have a pole there. The lines come from the back of the property. So they have two lines, one that comes to the studio apartment, and then one that comes, actually comes across the other neighbor, and then comes across, and then tags on to, and outside of the pole.
So PG&E could technically bring a line, or piggyback onto where his power comes up to the pole in the back, and bring it out to the street, to a pole and a light, and a meter.
Yeah, I don't think that would happen, because now you're bringing lines all across.
Yeah, you're gonna need an easement and everything else, that, you know. It's a great idea.
We'll definitely look into it. I mean.
All right.
Maybe we'll look into it, and if it's not undue burden to the applicant, or, you know, extensive trenching and costs to the city.
I have an idea, and I don't know this might, you know, I could put on my property in the front of it, if you guys, you know, I could put a little tree light out there. It's not a city light, but that's something you guys might wanna think about if other people are doing stuff. They have like, you know, they have like these nice pole lights that some people put in front of their houses that kinda shine a little bit of a light, but obviously, they may turn it off at night. So the street light would be on all.
I don't feel comfortable asking you to do that, or if you wanna do that on your own, that's one thing. So, so we'll leave it to, for staff to research. Look at the feasibility of doing it with the utmost intent of trying to do it, and leave it at that.
I do have a condition, and it's a pretty simple one, but that when the applicant places the sidewalk, that they align the, both sides of the sidewalk in alignment with Lear's sidewalk. So that if the middle property decides to actually pour their sidewalk, that it looks continuous, as opposed to having different widths and side.
I think that should be fine. I did meet the engineer out there, and with today's codes, the sidewalk should have to be at least five feet wide for ADA. And then, so obviously, the gutter that's in the street is already there, so we're just removing the sidewalk. The gutter is staying. Obviously, all the gutter is staying, and it just busts to that, to that gutter. So that gutter is in line, so it should all stay in line.
So in the process of doing his sidewalks, we'll pull an encroachment permit as well? And so our public works and our engineer will go out and make sure that it's, it's being laid to our standard for, you know, ADA, as well as that everything's lining up, and then as well for stormwater purposes.
Okay. So.
Chair Strowman, you mentioned colors, condition for the colors of the house.
Strike that, please.
Okay.
Double checking.
It didn't copy well. It did copy in black and white. I have the sticks at my desk if you wanna see them. They are cream and chocolate.
Well, and I'm just right around the corner from Bill's office.
So do we have a motion to make the findings as required per Section seventeen point five-six point zero? Actually, I already read this. So, do we have a motion?
Are we including the other conditions that you've placed, that Kurt's placed?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want us to reiterate this?
Well, I have a, I have a, I'm not feeling really comfortable about this gentleman is modifying the house a little bit, and now the city's gonna be asked to put a light on the street, possibly? I, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look into it and see where it's at. It doesn't hurt staff to at least look into it, since it's.
Explore it with PG&E.
Yeah, so, so where Commissioner Danzinger's coming from is this, this project's made him think about that area. And, oh, it is kind of dark over there, maybe we should, so it just opened up a door to another area, which is completely fine. And we'll definitely explore and see what our options are. But obviously, if it's something, you know, that, that we don't have the funding for, or PG&E doesn't have the capability, or maybe it's something that they're not interested in doing. We don't, we won't know until we at least contact them.
Well, so, so they'll, let me put this out, should we do a study to look at all the streets in Escalon?
You have to say, are there any lights on Kohli?
He had said, no, I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm, yeah, I'm not positive of.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure either.
I didn't hear what he said.
Is there lights on Kohli?
The, the only light I can see from Third Street down to Main is right there on the corner where the, the curves used to be a little, the fitness center, I think the leather shop.
Yeah.
There's one right there in the corner of that intersection.
Third Street on Kohli, or on? Second and Kohli, where the old curves was.
It's.
But on, he said, I thought you said Main Street, so.
I, I said from Third Street to Main Street on Kohli, there aren't any lights.
Third Street to First Street, possibly?
Okay, First Street.
Yeah, okay.
That first?
So, to address, to address Commissioner Castellanos's concerns, can we please read the conditions again?
So it's First Street.
So we've got, where did I start my notes here? We scratched the softening of the covers, or the colors, excuse me. Exploring the street light area, reviewing the lights on Kohli, aligning the sidewalk with Lear's property. Those are the only ones I have listed that I can read. Yeah, those three. A lot of it's mostly, a lot of talk about the lighting in general, so. Yeah, that was the only other thing. And then I took some notes down about Kurt's comments on considering rezoning to those type of properties, but that's not specific to this project.
Yeah. Well, you can't rezone R1, because it would be non-conformity, because you got two.
No, you don't do it by parcel. So I mean, if you did it, if you, if we did go through that process, you'd wanna do that whole area, not just a parcel.
R1, single-family residential homes are allowed to have a second unit on them. Not more than that, but you can have up to two units, like a mother-in-law.
ADU accessory dwelling.
You could.
You could.
I'm coming in.
You can state, if you look at the facts on this particular property from San Juan.
Area, not just.
R1, single-family.
Start it again. That was me.
Oh.
Also hung up.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other conditions, Commissioner? Okay. So do we have a motion?
I'll move on all staff recommendations, including the recommendations by the commission.
Okay.
And review by staff.
And a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Don't buy any time.
I like the idea that that neighborhood is changing. That's a really good sign.
I think a lot of Escalon is just good. I haven't heard anybody complain about Escalon. You know, like I said, people stop by the project, I love it, I talk about it. New people moving here just always have something good to say about Escalon. I came over here to talk to Diane about some things, and there's a gentleman over there talking to a gal at the thing, and he was moving here and talking about Escalon, how he liked it and stuff like that. Yeah, there just, there isn't a person I've come across in my time at Escalon that's been hated by us. I like to see positiveness of it, of this town, dude. I don't know where else there, there is to go, really. My friends in Antica, always getting robbed. Kohli was kinda going downhill, you know, I don't like going down McHenry. I'm not even gonna call them riffraff, be unfortunate, you know, it's just, it's sad. But Escalon really just seems to, you know, I don't wanna say have a grasp on it, but maybe just the people here are a little more proud.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Good luck on your project.
Oh, no, it's, I'm having a blast over there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay. Item number four, Project eighteen dash six-eight-eight, zoning ordinance amendment. Consider, consider making a recommendation to the Escalon City Council to adopt an ordinance mending both Chapter seventeen point four-one projections allowed in the yards, and Section seventeen point twelve dash zero-one-zero accessory buildings, and Section seventeen point four-one-one-eighty swimming pools.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. The City Council has inquired and requested staff propose revisions to our municipal code removing setback requirements in relation to accessory structures one hundred and twenty square feet in floor area or less, as they currently do not require a building permit to construct or place on the property. Structures of this size are typically small utility buildings used for outdoor storage in residents' backyards, and are simple enough in structure that they can typically be removed easily with minimal efforts when no longer in use. Most of these structures in town meet this description, or, or most of the structures in town that meet this description are prefabricated and can be purchased at the local home improvement store. Removing the setback requirements on structures one hundred and twenty square feet and smaller allows for our residents to be able to have a small utility building in their yard without the requirement of providing a five-foot clearance or setback between the structure and the property line. In most cases, the property line is identified by fencing which.
which is presumed to be placed on the property line at the time of construction. Um, we also had some other revisions. Uh, we like to take it upon ourselves to make any updates. Um, when we open up a code, review the entire code, um, pick up anything that needs to be cleaned up or updated. Um, the following items were also included as amendments. Number one for seventeen point four one one two zero, items B and C, were very similar, um, in their description, so we combined them um, to avoid any misinterpretation or unnecessary repetition. Um, number two in section seventeen point four one one two zero, item H, setback was reduced from five feet to three feet, uh, because they're not permanent buildings or structures, but the three feet provides access around them if needed, um, and is typically the minimum requirement for fire code for access. Um, spas were amended to meet pool setback requirement, requirements of three feet, reduced from five. Um, the last one was seventeen point four one one eight zero, item C amended, uh, proposed to be amended from ten feet to five feet to match another section of our code in seventeen point four one one two zero K, where it states that mechanical equipment such as air conditioner compressors or equipment, swimming pool pumps and filters and similar items shall not be located in any required front or side yard. So city staff has drafted the proposed amendments to all of the sections of the code um, that would need these revisions. Um, the section regarding projections allowed into yards, accessory buildings and swimming pools. Um, and then we are also adding the addition, proposing the, adding the definition of a small storage slash utility building into chapter seventeen point eight one definitions. Um, that way, in case anybody asks, we have it clearly defined in our code. Um, so our recommendation at this point is that the planning commission opens the public hearing to receive any comment and then close it. Um, and then find that it's categorically exempt pursuant to one five oh six one B, which is a review of exemption, and then make a recommendation to the city council that they adopt an ordinance amending these chapters as proposed by city staff. Um, attached to this item are the red lines and clean versions of each of these sections of code. Um, and then I can answer any questions if you have any, or we can review the red lines together.
Okay. This time, we're gonna start with Commissioner Sarkozy.
So I have a question. Uh, so with the, eliminating the setback on the storage sheds, what does that do with it being up, right up next to it and any drainage going to the neighbors' property?
So drainage-wise, there is a section, um, it, through our California Building Code, when we adopted it, um, into our municipal code to follow that regulation, we did adopt Appendix J. Um, I believe it's one, section one oh nine and one oh nine point four, um, which gives, uh, a clear requirement for drainage across property lines that our building inspector would be able to go out and require that the owner of the property um, deter any drainage issue from crossing the property line um, by use of putting up, um, drains or, um... I'm, I'm losing the word here.
Gutter.
Gutters, that type of stuff, yeah, uh, to deter it from crossing property lines. So there is language in the building code, um, that would relate to that, yes.
And then that would be incumbent on a neighbor, uh, calling out or making a complaint?
Yes.
Uh, inspectors don't go out and just randomly force that?
Unless we see something that's a potential hazard or safety concern. Um, it would typically, uh, be more on a reporting basis. Um, we do have circumstances, you know, where if staff's around and they see a new construction of something, that they may issue out a letter um, or contact the property owner, um, to have them confirm or, or come in and meet with the city to describe whatever there is there, that they're constructing. Um, at that point, you know, we would ask its size, and if it's under one hundred and twenty, which is a simple ten by twelve, um, shed, then it would not be subject to the setback requirements. And then at that time, we would advise them, stormwater-wise, that they cannot have any stormwater crossing the property lines.
Good. Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Danzinger?
Yes, thank you, President. Uh, this'll go a long way in decriminalizing some of our residents here in town, which I'm always in favor of. One thing that kind of strikes me here is, a, and, and I did it with my neighbor, and he subsequently did it with me, is we communicated when I put up my shed and subsequently he put up his, you know, would this bother you in your line of sight? Is this gonna have a detrimental effect on our relationship? And, y- you know, you can't legislate those things. People have to do those. But when you put them three feet, you know, you, and I'm for this. I'm just saying, you, you may get comments, uh, from neighbors that don't talk to each other, uh, you know, because of that. So how would you handle that?
Um, so currently, we have a lot of that happening, um, specifically with fencing. So the city's standpoint on fencing has always been it's a civil matter that you would need to figure out together. Um, we try our best to encourage neighbors to talk to each other about things, but typically, when they come to us, it's already advanced to a level, um, you know, where they might not be able to come back from. So that, that's how it would be addressed if this was to move forward, would be we don't have setback requirements anymore on structures that are one hundred and twenty square feet. Staff would do our due diligence in confirming that whatever structure's out there meets the restriction of, you know, one hundred and twenty square feet or smaller uh, and less than nine feet in height. Um, and then at that point, as long as it's not providing, pushing drainage over across the property line, um, we would als, uh, once again advise that it would be a civil matter that would need to be handled between two neighbors. So when they ask, what does that mean, that would typically mean, um, in the, try to, trying to work it out with your neighbor or come up with some type of solution. Um, the ultimate challenge being deciding whether you wanted to go to small claims over it. So, which most people do not do just for the process, so...
The, um, pool, three feet from a property line? Does that physically impact underneath the property line, uh, for existing residents?
No, um...
I.e. when you're digging it?
Yeah. Current code is three feet to water's edge. Uh, the change being proposed tonight, we have two sections of the code for pool equipment. One says it can't be within ten feet of a side property line. One says it can't be within five feet of side property line. So we have a conflict when pool contractors come in, they don't know where to put it, and we always say the five because it's less restrictive. So we're just updating that one section that says ten. But the three feet to water's edge, that has been in the code, and it doesn't have an effect.
We did update the spa because the spa said five, and we were matching that to pool because they're basically similar.
Yeah.
So the pool equipment is five feet from a side?
Side, but your side yard ends at the rear of your house.
Okay.
So as soon as you get to the back wall of your house, all the way across, that's rear yard, which can be up against the fence.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Commissioner Castellanos?
No comments.
And no comments for me. Okay, so let's, uh, open up the public hearing at eight fifty-one. And hearing none, we will close the public comment at eight fifty-one.
That's still funny every meeting. I don't know why.
So, uh, we need a motion to find that this project is categorically exempt pursuant to section fifteen oh six one B, review exemption of the SEQA. And we, in that same motion, we will make a recommendation to the city council that they adopt an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point four one projections allowed into yards, section seventeen point twelve dash zero one zero accessory buildings, section seventeen point four one dot one eight zero swimming pools, and adding a definition to chapter seventeen point eight one definitions under S as proposed by city staff.
Make a motion to...
We have a motion, and I will second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulate.
All right. Under next item, matters presented from the audience. At this time, the public may address the planning commission on any non-agendized item that is within the authority of the commission. The speaker is limited to maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yoded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the commission is a discretionary decision made by the commission chair. All of our audience members are left, so we will not be presenting any items from the audience. Uh, with that, we'll turn it over to staff for staff communication.
We got our first two building permit applications for Westwood Country. Um, expecting three more shortly, within the next week or so. So their first, uh, phase is gonna be five homes.
Do you expect any of the neighbors to say, I can see P and L? Cement mix are over there. Can you ask him to lower it?
We haven't gotten that yet.
You will.
We do have a lot of people coming in, you know, asking about setbacks and stuff like that. So it's, it's, it's nice that they're coming this early because you typically don't see them until after the house is built and they're in, so...
Yeah, that's why it was good to have the, the neighbors show up because I remember Ace's second building, and they were, the, the neighbors, uh, I think it was Swenson? They were upset with the lights off the first one, and they wanted to make sure that, that there wasn't a problem there. So, uh, at least you're getting it out in the open now.
That's right.
So other than that, I mean, we have the, the RV, we're getting a little busier here. Um, we have a lot of, a lot more activity with the residents looking to, at things that what they can do to their lots. So that's good because any improvements bring some type of improvement, um, to the looks. So we may or may not have a couple more items coming at the next meeting. Um, we have had a lot of inquiries where we were expecting some applications in, but they just haven't made it in yet, so...
All right. Ms. City Manager?
Yes.
Anything to add for staff communications?
I, I know I have a lot of stuff, but I just can't think of anything right now.
All right. Commissioner Communication? Now I'm looking at you, Commissioner Danziger.
I know, I know, like, I could feel it, I could see it. Uh, yeah, my, my suggestion, you know, for the long term, to find out how many of these changes to zoning had taken place and how many parcels are, are affected by that. It's been my experience in the past, I, I seen, I saw it when, uh, I was with Mountain View, and they wanted to change industrial to residential. They put a twenty-five-year time limit on it, and they passed it. And so anybody that wanted to buy, sell a property there, knock one down or put one up, knew that there was a time ticking. And usually, when you rezone, you know, whatever to whatever, if there's going to be a change to that occupancy, you know, that's when you say, no, it's a, it's a C two. And the non-conforming thing becomes kind of problematic. You don't, y- you know, you're allowing them to do something that probably shouldn't have been done to begin with, and you're continuing to do it when it zones something else. And it's just too confusing, and I, I think you can make the argument that as you go through there, and I, I guess you want to gain, uh, council and commissioner, uh, input on it as to how you want to handle these things going forward. If, if it's been rezoned, you know, by whomever or when, you know, fifty years ago, do you want to honor that? And if you don't, how about we do it so it's not, you know, a conflict of interest here? And, yeah, I'm sorry about the last one there, but I didn't really appreciate the, the guy, Elliot, Mr. Elliot. Uh, he, he personally, um, kind of was an affront, but, uh, anyway, that's all I've got.
So just so you're aware, and, and our mission, we do have language in the municipal code, um, that gives a, a six-month limit. So what we've experienced with our non-conforming is if it's vacant and up for sale or just vacant in general, and we become aware of it, we start the six-month clock. If it's not sold and somebody doesn't move into it, and that six months expires, that's when we hold it to its new commercial, so it's new commercial use. Um, so about a year ago, we had the, this happen with a house on Jackson. Um, it was vacated and up for sale. We started the clock on it. We ran it, and then these people knew that the clock was gonna expire on a date. They expedited the closing of escrow. They expedited submitting of their building permits. They, they got everything done, and, and we stuck on them until the very end, that they had to get the permits done within this amount of time, this done. We made them put their sidewalks in, everything.
And keep it residential?
And they kept it residential because they made those deadlines. Um, so when it does come to our attention, and for the most part, we pretty much keep our eyes up watching what's coming up for sale and, and things that are going. And so we know where the non-conforming is and where it's not. It's typically more in our old areas, along the one twenty, you know, headed through town. Um, I mean, and, and we held strong on that, and they, they were just able to beat the clock because we told them if it's not done by this date, we're, it's done and it's commercial, and you bought it, and you'll have to turn it into something commercial, and nobody's gonna be able to live in it. So they were able to meet the deadline. So that's what we currently have in our code. So we do have the language. Um, the only possible or potential downfall of it being is it's, it's, it's by parcel. So it just happens to have to be vacant for six months or not in...
I, I remember what you're talking about, you know?
Yeah, and then we make it conform, so...
Yeah, I, I just like the, when I see C two property out there and somebody wants to treat it residentially, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, either make it residential, or no, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Make it, make it C two. Yeah, either way, it would be a benefit to the city. One would be commercially, and the other would be residentially.
And we discussed that too because we were weighing it out. I mean, if, we kind of knew that if we did zone it commercial, I mean, it's got a house sitting on it. We're wondering ourselves, who's gonna purchase the house and make it into something commercial? So what if it ends up just sitting there for years vacant? Um, you know, so you kind of have to weigh the, the outcome. We would rather have the house occupied, people living in it at times, than having it just sitting there vacant. Be, in, in this case, it was because we were having people moving into the house that weren't supposed to be there, and we had to go through the process of making them vacate. And so because we had already dealt with that on that project or on that house, we were sensitive to that, what if somebody else gets into it? But we did hold them to the deadline and, which really made them expedite everything, so...
Okay. Commissioner Sarkozy?
Uh, well, I just, I'm very, uh, pleased with both these projects that came forward to us today. Good for the city. Uh, and then, um, just a question, you know what's going on behind Dollar Tree? That, that little lot between there and the, I call it the Union Hall.
Yeah, it's a supervisor's correctional, yeah.
They've got some caution tape, and they got, looks like they're doing some trenching or something.
They're gonna, they're going to lay gravel down. Um, so they don't want to completely develop the lot or haven't figured out specifically what they want to do. Um, but they do want to be able to do some type of storage or car parking on there. Um, it's been a discussion at, at council level, um, to allow for gravel to be laid in some circumstances. Um, so they're moving forward with gravelling that lot so they can be able to utilize it better than just a dirt lot.
So that's their, their property?
It is their property, yeah.
That trailer will probably be parked there.
Yes, the trailer that is currently there, and with screen. Or actually, no, he's gonna be parking in our back.
He's applied to park back here.
Yes, yeah. Oh, yes, we offer our B if any of you guys are interested.
You guys have competition now.
We do, we, we will eventually.
But these spots are fifteen feet. They're not thirty-five, forty foot.
We have a few that are thirty, thirty and thirty.
Anything else, Commissioner Sarkozy?
No, not tonight.
Commissioner Castellanos? Um, I have something that has absolutely nothing to do with the planning commission, but this is my opportunity to talk to city staff pretty regularly. And that is, um, if you could pass it along to Recreation Commission, that, um, when the pavilion at, uh, the park is rented, um, on, uh, soccer weekend, to please make sure that the amount of spaces are very clearly designated. How many are for the pavilion and how many are open to the general public?
Are you referring to the barbecue area or the community center?
The barbecue area.
So we don't mark those at all?
Okay, um, I don't know if Jenny mentioned this to you or not.
Okay, um, I don't know if Jenny mentioned this to you or not, but about three weeks ago, there was a large family reunion and they had eight to ten parking spaces completely blocked off.
Yeah, we, we got word of that. I think that they had even asked and we had told them that we don't allow that, so.
Well, um, we may want to be cautious of that because it created a pretty big deal at soccer. And, uh, then we went back the next week and, um, another event went out and, uh, it wasn't the celebration of life, but then they had, ever, they had the, all the parking stalls in front of the pavilion, uh, blocked off. And it was, I think it, it should be clear that, hey, you know, you're renting the pavilion, but at the same time, these parkings, it is a soccer weekend and parking is limited in these areas.
We do. We, we try to let renters know that. So, I mean, but we're not out there. I mean, you could call officers. They could, you know, if you wanted to come down there, but, um, we, it is on the rental form too.
Or maybe, like I said, consider designating two or three stalls reserved for pavilion use only or something like that. Because it was a nightmare and, uh, just take it for what it's worth.
Did they ever contact the school?
Who contacted the school?
You or anybody from the city about, uh, using the school parking lots that is underutilized on weekends?
The school parking lots are open. I mean, people could go down there and park, but that's too far to walk.
Well, there, there's an option.
Not for a four-year-old. That's all I have. So, with that, we will, we don't have to have a motion to adjourn, do we?
No.
We will adjourn the meeting at nine oh five PM.
Thank you.
My son has a hard time walking, hard time walking across the street, let alone from the high school.
You mean he runs?
Well, um, technically with Covenant Church right there, there is sidewalk now at least. It goes along the roadway there where you, you would be crossing Arthur Avenue, so.
Great.
Good work.